All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Today is Wednesday, December 14th, 2016. This is the tri-town meeting where representatives of three towns, the school district, and the school committee get together and chat about things. Maybe before we get started, we can sort of go around the room and introduce everyone to everyone. I'll start and kind of go around and we'll have folks in the audience speak up. I'm Sam Waisaki, I'm chairman of the board of the Bolton Selectmen.
Tom Keefe, Bolton Selectmen.
Walter Sandrowski, Bolton Lancaster Selectmen.
Mark Crassow, Lancaster Selectmen.
Don Lowe, Bolton Town Administrator.
Tom Crane, Bolton Selectmen.
Joe Meyerson, Bolton Advisory Committee.
Brooke Clancy, Superintendent Schools. Lorraine Ramos, School Representative. And Neil Folsen, Delaware Department.
Kathy Codyan, Lancaster School Committee.
Ted Kirchner, Bolton Advisory.
I'm Ryan McNutt, I'm the Lancaster Town Administrator.
Jennifer Leoni, Lancaster School Committee.
Eddie Barlow, I'm the Chief of Police in the Town of Lancaster.
Mark Jones, I'm a school committee member from Stowe.
Katru Advisor, Columbia Bolton.
Brian Boyle, Advisory Committee in Bolton.
I'm Robert Bond, I was hoping I could listen in on the meeting. If that's okay.
Sure.
And Neil Darcy.
Neil Darcy. Bolton School Committee Director.
Welcome, everyone. Hopefully we'll have a productive but not too much of a meeting this evening. We have three agenda items and then perhaps at the end, if there's any really pertinent town news that any one of the representatives wants to do, we can do that. First up is our agenda submitted by the Rain of Moscow, his municipal and district student safety concerns.
Can I ask a question? Is it possible for us to flip number one and number two?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Sure.
All right.
And coming up, we'll flip them. Okay, we're right along. We'll do a district update, facilities and initiatives, Rain of Moscow.
So Superintendent Clancy is going to talk to you about the district, facilities, the initiatives that have been going on, the progress of the work. She's got an updated spreadsheet that I know that Bolton Board of Selectmen has seen in the past, just while you're getting prepared for that. The things that are coming up relatively soon, the administration is working with their staff and going through their line items on the budget and really looking at that. We won't get the budget until January. We are working to make sure that we get a more visible experience with the budget this year. So more to come on that. We're also going to begin our selective bargaining efforts with the union. Town Administrator Don Lowe serves on the board along with Jennifer Leoni, the committee along with Jennifer Leoni from Lancaster. Kathy Codyan from Lancaster.
I'm probably going anywhere, right?
So we'll look to start that in January. I think there's also a cost contract that the administration is currently negotiating. They're putting up here. So there's enough work on that. And I'm just going to let the superintendent go through this.
Sure. So this basically is an extension to the sheet that we had been working on all summer. We just kind of tweaked it a little bit so, okay, what have we got done, what have we got completed? And I've kind of color coordinated and I'll just kind of walk that through a little so quickly, too. And actually Chairman Moscow was exactly right. I believe that we've talked through these kinds of items with a group of you or if not all of you at one point in time. Could have even been Moscow down, to be honest with you. And so this is just kind of an updated list and I actually even have other updates this evening. One of the things I would bring to your attention, first of all, is if you take a look at the third column, all the status, you can see complete all the way down, you know, for at least the two pages. And so that was a lot of the summer work that I had come into and so we've gone through and just basically said, yes, all this work now is completed. We have some dates there that they were completed on. And then at the far line with the right was, were these items specifically budgeted for in this particular school year? And the answer was no. Right now, these items are all in, you know, in our expenditure lines and we don't have anything over budget right now. But of course, this takes the place of other things that you might have done, you know, had on deck to do. And so that kind of takes a backseat right now because in essence, this has used up that money. So the only other thing that I pointed out on the first sheet is where it says the water leaking the floor in Emerson. We actually did manage to cover quite a bit of that through insurance, which was fabulous. So we had a check in demand of about $8,000 and change to help offset the cost for that. So that was terrific. So everything else was all completed. If you take a look, and certainly feel free if you've got some questions, I'll do my best to answer them, although Jeff Congress probably would be the best person, our director of facilities, to answer that. I had a great conversation today with Bill Ridley. If you take a look at the next page, the blue at the top, Hail Boiler Number One Repair. These were two, there were two quotes here that we were given, $25,000 and change and then down below, $15,000 and change. And this was one of the things that was kind of on deck for me when I came in. Bill and I talked about it way back of then, I want to say it was perhaps August. And he said, you know, I'm going to have my folks go in and take a quick look at that. And so we came back and he and I were talking about it today and said, you know, I think we can take these numbers off. There's a repair that's certainly necessary there that we're going to have to attend to, but it's nothing like we had anticipated. So those numbers, effective tonight, can now fall off that this page. The roof repairs, there's still work that needs to be done on the roofs and you can see over to the right at a column that there was some money budgeted for those repairs. So where these are all kind of pending quotes at this point in time, but know that the work is ongoing, that this is not off our radar right now. Underneath other, the high school leach field, I know that Don and I had several conversations on this. And this is, this is still something that's just kind of out there and Don probably could speak to it as easily as I could in terms of the issue that we're up against. We don't have a number right now. We don't really know what we're up against and certainly feel free to jump in, Don, if you'd like to take that particular item to be the explanation. I would just do a broad overview, like that's how I would, basically it can be grandfathered. We were hoping that the issue could be grandfathered and it can't be as a result of the regs that came, and it came to pass. And it really is about the distance that the fluid travels and how close it is to the well.
Yeah, the well in question being what the post office well and the speed at which the fluid travels. And yes, because of that, I met with DEP, when I met with DEP about the water treatment facility, I brought this up as well. And they, it's certainly on their radar screen. They want to see the district moving forward as quickly as possible. And it's not, depending on what the solution is going to be, they're pretty much going to have to relocate the filtration, I mean, the leach field and the pump or the treatment facility. So where it's going to be relocated to, I don't know. We had, I had whitewater with us when we were addressing the water treatment facility. They are familiar with the issue. They've been reaching out to Jeff Congress to try and get, try and get started on this because it is two years, with two years, it's going to go by really quickly. And I know at the meeting that I had, that they expressed concerns that, that we perhaps weren't, that the district weren't, wasn't perhaps as far along as they would like to have seen. So I know, but this is something that, that they communicated and with two year, with the two-year window, you know, there were things that needed to get done more quickly so the district couldn't get to it right away, wasn't that they didn't want to. So now, in a position of one catch-up, and the superintendent's correct, it's very premature to talk about a cost estimate or anything like that. And I do know that, that there are bevaluing different options. What's great is that whitewater, they're up on whitewater, is totally, totally up to speed on this and knows exactly what the next step there is to take place.
And if you see the $5,000 there allocated, this was because he actually had told us, I want to say in August or September, that it probably would cost us about $5,000 to have a look at and examine options. So that's what that money is there for.
Now, is that, is this the treatment facility, if you're looking at the school, is it the front, to the left, close to the post office?
Right. So just going through that list, the high school temporary tank rental, that can, that may fall off as well, so that's something that's kind of tentative in there. Going down below on deck, these are still things that we're looking at. I don't think I necessarily need to go through all of them, but I can, I'm certainly happy to give a broad overview on, on any of them. The high school tank, tank corrosion, I need to, just if I can just talk about that just ever so briefly. This is the tank that is actually buried and we actually had to make some, do some repairs on it this summer, which we did. But the problem apparently from, from what I'm being told is that it tends to fill up with water and it was not attached appropriately and so it becomes buoyant as water gets in there. And so that's actually how the top part of the piece got broken. And so for us to just fix it, like just the piece is broken, makes no sense to me to fix the issue there. So just so that you know, that's on, that's on our radar as well.
That from oil tank?
It is, yes, that's my understanding. So, and I think it's right at the back of the school, on the side. And let me just quickly check. You'll see that I also have a Florence Sawyer boiler just on there. I'm not sure whether you want to speak to that piece at all or bring it up. I can certainly tee it up just to say that this is, in some ways, very much like the Emerson boiler. It's a boiler that's, I think, maybe past its prime in some ways and needs us to be taking a second look at. So I think that, again, Don and I have been in contact certain with her as well about this and Jeff on our side. So I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that because that's still pretty preliminary.
I think the only thing I'll add is not one boiler, it's multiple boilers, we'll get three or four of them. And I am hopeful that if we get the Green Community Grant, that we can use those funds to replace the boilers, to make an appropriation. I'm still researching that. I do know that, I've been told that if we do that, we would need to get rid of the, well, we would have to switch over to propane rather than go with oil because it's a, it's less, it's a smaller pollutant and it's more efficient. And I'm well aware that propane is more expensive than oil, but I'm told that what we pay for in addition to the cost of the fuel, we make up for in efficiency. I haven't seen the numbers yet, but that's what I've been told.
The, just below the Florence Sawyer boilers is the, it says District-wide Emergency Task Force recommendations. We have had a great task force and with all of our police involved, we've had the fire chiefs and representatives involved, and they actually reported out to our school committee at the last meeting. And they have four very specific recommendations. And depending on what the school committee decides as the next step forward, will have a bearing on whatever number that we put into that block right there. So they mentioned, for example, the computer system potential. There's a special door lock that we've been looking at that the task force goes very strong about that would go into place in every door across the district. So there are a number of really strong recommendations from the curb, so that's why there's a question mark there, but it's on deck for us and we're looking at it. And then of course, finally, the town of Bolton, I still have the old number of $25,000 rather than $37,000, but certainly we want to thank the town of Bolton. And at our, I think, our meeting the other night, I think that was just amazing to watch as the numbers gradually came in before we, there was a quorum. That was just, I thought, how fabulous that so many people sat and waited until a folks' number, knowing full well it was, it kicked off at 8:30, I think, and we, I know we were kind of worried that we might start losing people out the other way. And I, all the credit to Bolton the other night, so thank you so much. So that's in a quick nutshell, kind of an overarching view.
I wanted to add one other thing and I know what that, I'm sure you would agree with this, that, and I mentioned this the other night when we were going over this, that without Don Lowe getting involved in this and being so hands-on and being immediate with his response, we never would have opened these schools in time because of all the challenges that we had. And he really rose to the occasion, I think, that the town really owes him a debt. And I'm saying that here because it does affect the district too, obviously.
Don has been incredibly faithful. He actually knew Ryan as well, every Monday morning in my office, faithfully, every Monday morning, we all meet and we talk through all of our issues, particularly with regards to the physical plants. And I'm so appreciative of everything that the superintendent brought. And Bill Ridley pops in or I pop in, because I was like I did today, you know, just to review a couple of things, you know, I've got a list for him and I take it over.
Yes, Superintendent Clancy, I'm sorry, wait until you turn around.
That's fine.
I heard that you have discussed the center roof repairs with our town administrator? Or did I hear that?
No, you didn't hear that. Not, not from me. I don't know if you heard it from the house.
No, no, I, I.
Oh. No, what we're saying is we actually have some roof issues district-wide right now. For example, at the auditorium, at the high school and such, so we're looking, we're taking a look at all of those cumulatively across the district.
But center roof is fairly new and it's surprising, or will be surprising in my town, that it needs to be repaired so quickly or so soon after it went into use. Do you have any information about that you can?
No, I wouldn't have anything specific to give you tonight, to be honest with you. I'm just saying that we're looking at all of the roofs across the district right now.
So you don't necessarily?
So I don't think that center necessarily has a huge issue over there. No, not at all.
I apologize.
Yeah. No, my biggest concern right now is really the high school, to be honest with you. That, that's my biggest concern. We've got pockets there that are, are very problematic for us.
So, so, okay, so I just want to clarify because I, I can understand where Mr. Bird is probably confused because in the document it says.
It's sitting on the document.
It's a pending quote. So you're not saying there are issues at every single roof across the district, you're just looking at to ensure.
Right. And in all honesty, that, if you take a look at the column that says this was budgeted, so the, that means from my end that somebody previous to me thought that there was an issue with this because there was money budgeted for it and we're going back now to see if that's the case.
When you say budgeted, out of the town budget or budget?
No, out of our budget right now that's sitting in our, in our budget lines as a school district.
That's interesting because of course, center and Hail are owned by the town and we do all the capital repairs. But I suggest, so that I guess suggests that this isn't a capital.
No, that's exactly right. These are just the smaller repairs. We're not looking at the $10,000 items.
Thank you. Sorry for interrupting your flow.
Yeah.
I think we've got the Florence Sawyer school.
That's actually another one, that's right.
Superintendent, I have two questions for you real quick. Just one, this is a basic question. It's only $1,260 in Lancaster and Chilling maintenance, annual maintenance. It's not budgeted. Why would an annual maintenance not be budgeted?
I have, I don't have an answer for that. That's a great question. I don't have an answer.
Okay.
But I know that it was something we had to look at this year.
Secondary question, it's a broad one and I don't want to go down the curve too, too far, but with the high school continuing to have pretty substantial issues in a district that's not getting any smaller in the school, that's not going to get any younger, we take that into account, obviously we're going to have to replace the building at some point. How do we determine which of these issues we can punt down the road a little bit to determine if we, if a new school resolves that, versus if we take on that?
You know, that's such a terrific question because to be honest with you, we've even in turn had that conversation with regards to leach field.
That was my question.
Yeah, and said, and we've actually even spoken with the Department of Environmental Protection with that very question. And so I don't have an answer on that, but I would want you to know that we're thinking about that constantly. So for example, even the flooring is an issue in certain parts of that building and you have to look and say, are we really going to do something major here?
We're going to throw good money after that.
Yeah, exactly. So I think that that's a great idea. So our school committee and certainly either Chair of Moscow or Mr. Jones can certainly feel free or Mr. Darcy to chime in on this. Is this something we're looking at? Yes, because I think it's something that we do need to look at. Are we, are we looking at a new building? Are we looking at modernizing or are we just looking at putting money into this building? I think that's really where we're at. And then how do you prioritize, like the roof, for example, the roofing issues that I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of just the auditorium as an example, that's something we have to fix. I mean, we can't, we can't not fix that, you know? So in those kinds of cases, I think you go after that as a priority as opposed to, and the flooring wouldn't be problematic if it wasn't a safety issue. But when it's a safety issue, you're looking at, say, we have to fix that.
Yeah, there's things on there like locker replacements and repairs, things like that.
Yeah, the, to be honest with you, the lockers is something that's been, if you take a look, it's been on the budget for several years. Yeah, so, so we are having ongoing discussions right now with that because if that's a need, I mean, then we're going to have to do something like that. But, and the fact that it's been budgeted for several years prior to me coming in says that somebody else felt that it was a need as well.
So you raised, and I forgot to bring it up, so thank you for that, the school committee is starting to look at a statement of interest with the MSBA to get an understanding of what are, what are our options with the building? Because we're not engineers and we had, we had a committee, a space study task force that did a great job, but they aren't structural engineers, they don't specialize in that area. So Mark Jones, actually the vice chair is kind of leading us through that and we were supposed to have the last meeting, but our agendas got flipped. And we're going to start looking at, Mark will be bringing forward to us, what's the process look like? It doesn't mean that if we decide we want to enter into the statement of interest opportunity, does not mean it's a commitment to dance and we're not going to do that. But we will, and we have committed, and we will get out, try to find out, educate ourselves as to what the process is to get us to that point and at what point does the decision have to be made or not made and the communities, we will be going to all three of our communities once we educate ourselves so that we can go out and educate the rest of the communities. But you're right, we have to, you know, I said it in one of the meetings, it's nobody, you know, this is, this high school situation, the physical building, has been an issue for years, for years. And nobody really wants to take it on because it's bigger than a bread box, but at some point, you gotta, you gotta cut bait and make a decision. So that's what we're doing right now, is trying to get ourselves informed and make a decision as to at least know what our options are, put it out to the communities because it's not a school committee decision, it's not a superintendent decision, it's a community-wide decision.
And I don't think we're feeling any hurry. I don't, I think that that would be the other thing. I don't think that we're feeling rushed to this.
Well, we're not, we're not in a hurry, but we have to, we have to address it. We have to move forward.
I have a question about the leach field and is it public water supply for post office?
Yeah.
Or it's just a well?
I think, I think it's just a well for the post office.
So just wondering, which was built first?
That's a really good question.
So why aren't they moving their well?
Yeah, well, that's the exact question I asked EDC because the filtration plan of the leach field was put in first and then the well came after. So I wanted to know why it wasn't grandfathered and they said under circum, certain circumstances it would be, but because of the travel rate of the liquid and I guess not being able to dissipate isn't the right word, but to.
Leach.
Be, yes, the leach. By the time it gets to the well area, that's the reason. And it's part of their regs that they, they have criteria that have to be met and that's one that, that's the one that goes on.
So why, why wouldn't they move, you know, propose to move the well?
Because per their regs, they want to see the leach field moved. I mean, that's, I understand exactly what you're saying and that was the answer that they gave me and that it's not negotiable as far as they're concerned.
So I have a question for you, Superintendent. I'm just looking at the lead results, the lead in the water results. So I have a couple of questions. One is.
I don't know that I would be prepared to, just so we're clear, I don't know, I don't have them in front of me and I don't know if I'd be prepared to answer, but I'll try to do my best.
Okay, so no problem. So there was, there are, there is lead in the water. And, and I didn't know all of these are titled Florence Sawyer School, but this arose as a result of questions on Emerson. So I assume that they just titled these wrong or did we only do Florence Sawyer?
No, my understanding is that we did both.
Okay, so all the reports say Florence Sawyer, but I thought maybe they thought they're both, you know.
I'll do a quick check though on that.
Yeah, so, but some of them. Say the nurse, again, this says Florence Sawyer, but so I don't know which school it's talking about, but, and I was surprised to see that Florence Sawyer would have any lead just because it's very recent, but the nurse's office, the second floor, second floor staff room, second floor girl's room. And then as we go to this other one, there is, in the kitchen tap, there's, there's lead as well. So I was just wondering, is that on the radar to get that down to?
Well, I want to jump in for a second, if you don't mind. I want to understand if the report that you're reading indicates, now you don't have to show, because I won't be able to absorb it right now, but if the report that you're reading indicates if those are, if those levels are concerning or not, because I would hope that we won't find ourselves in the situation we were in the last time the superintendent was here, when it was a very inflammatory situation. And I want to be sure that what we're asking is not something that's putting a panic out to the community. And if, if there are minimal microscopic, and I have to be honest, I haven't absorbed that report, then let's be clear about it.
Yeah, so the action level, I mean, it's still probably a lot to absorb, but it's .015 and where it was above, so none of them hit the .015.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, but, I mean, this happens all the time where, you know, the regulatory agencies are in touch, are up with the science. So why are we thinking about getting all those down to an undetectable level? And I know you've said you're not prepared, but.
No, would that be on my radar level, on my radar, which is your question, right? I would say, no, it wasn't because my understanding, when we had the conversation with the company, my understanding from that conversation was that we were, we were well on our safe zone and I remember them saying, if we thought at all that we weren't safe, we would, we would be bringing in a different source of water. So to be honest with you, that's, so it didn't stay on my radar level because of that.
Okay, but I mean, I guess, so my question is, and maybe you need to go back, why would we, why would we accept any at all, where it's such, it's a neurotoxin and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, and I'm not sure that we have the capacity to get it to, would you look, well really, just right in the bottom line, is somehow to get it to zero?
Well, the.
So there's absolutely no trace?
Well, there's an undetectable level, they call it, and that's less, and a lot of them are under the detectable level. Where it is detectable, especially in things like the kitchen, I mean, would we, you know, undoubtedly in a few years, they'll say, you know, it should be zero or whatever, but have you looked at that, trying to get it to an undetectable level?
No.
Any, any?
I can certainly look into it right now, no, is it, had this only had risen to our, to the level of gee, we need to go up? If we felt that we had, that we needed to, or we should, or we had to, we definitely would.
Right.
So.
No, I mean, but no matter what the level is, who would want their child drinking that water and not getting a boot?
I hear what you're saying.
And I have, I have a follow-up question. So besides, you tested, the district tested for lead and copper. Wouldn't there be like a panoply of just baseline things that there would be generalized concern about in the drinking water, like, I don't know, petrochemicals or, just to rule it out? I was surprised to see that it was just lead and just copper, like how did they decide just those metals?
Well, we have, there's ongoing testing throughout the course of the year, right? I believe the ones that you're looking at there.
Were from September.
Yeah, right. And there, there are other tests that they do throughout the course of the year, not just the September test. That was a test for the lead and the copper. Is it copper that it is?
The copper is there too.
Yeah, because I, I'm pretty sure that if we go back, and that's when they look at different, different potential toxins. So this is not the only test that's done.
Right, I guess that's what I'm asking. If there's this.
There are other tests that are.
Common, you know, toxins or contaminants that there were, the EPA or the state DEP would have a concern about, are we going to test for all of those just to get a baseline? Because I think some of them, once you test and they come back undetectable or whatever, then, you know, it's not going to change.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear in what, what exactly are you asking of me from here?
I mean, the general concern is that I think that lead in the water should be undetectable no matter where it is. The copper, there's copper, why, what other, you know, metals of concerns, you know?
So I guess it would be seeing the rest of the report, not just focus, I mean, so we focus on lead and copper, but focusing on the other.
The other metals.
You know, other things they test for.
Do they not have that in the report? Oh, the September he does. That was one that he had interested in, if you will.
All this is, is lead and copper.
Right, that's correct.
Jersey. I might be able to offer some help on that, because I just literally spoke with, not for the schools, but I spoke with a professional and asked very similar questions. It's very, not, I was told, it's very untypical for lead to be naturally in the ground in this, in this region of the country. But that being said, if you're getting trace elements, often what it is, it's the soldering between the pipes, cells, and the water supply. And if the water is, you know, slightly off, whatever it reaches through, there become, right, there becomes trace elements, that's why you're seeing copper too, most likely. I'm not the pro, but I'm just, I had that literally three days ago, that conversation. So that might be it, but the only other thing, I know that Superintendent Clutchy is trying to figure out what's going on, but as far as what she can do to help, but maybe the town does something with testing that's different that you guys suggest that you guys use in order to be able to identify, so nobody in the town is actually drinking any water that might be unsafe. And we'd be happy to take on that same process, I'm sure.
I think the high copper levels might be coming from the acidic water. We all have this issue with our pipes dissolving and getting green marks in our toxic levels, so I think that's, might be where the copper's coming from, the lead.
I guess the, the lead, don't you want to, you know, wouldn't we all want to run it down to where, is it from the soldering, or is it from, you know, I don't think it's naturally occurring. I think it's from the pipes, or the lead, or the solder, or something. But I would think...
And I don't think any of us is an expert, we should probably talk to someone who understands this. We're speculating right now, and I, again, I want to encourage that we're not trying to inflame the community with fear. That's a dangerous, unfair thing to do. So why don't we get an expert, someone to come and tell us what the situation is, so we can understand, understand where the issues are, because we're speculating right now.
Anything else, as far as updates?
As far as, as far as those updates are concerned, I think that's it, unless you have more questions for us. Okay, so you're all set. I'm just going to ask Neil Darcy to come up, because Neil had asked me to put the number one, which we flipped, so thank you.
Sure.
The municipal and district student safety concerns on the agenda, so I'm going to turn it over to Neil, if that's okay. Come on up.
Yes, thank you. So the reason that I'm here today is, is just to make sure that everyone is online here, all the selectmen in town, in the districts. The SRO, you probably know what the high school left recently, who's the safety resource officer, that's been at the high school part-time for a while now, went full-time recently, and, and there's a bit of a backstory, I think, that needs to actually also let go, because this affects all the towns here. And it's, in my opinion, there's been a bit of a lack of transparency regarding this, this whole situation. I'm going to go back to June. So in June, and I'm going to read this, it's lame, but it's a little complex, and I don't want to screw it up here. So in, in June, I was contacted by Bolton Selectman, Mr. Keith, he contacted me via email regarding the high school safety resource officer. The email suggested essentially that the police, in particular the SRO, were involved in profiling and treating a group of students inequitably with tactics of force that would not be considered for the rest of the student body. It seemed to me that based on some of the political situations in the town at the time, I know the chief was having a tough time being confirmed, that this might have a little bit more to do with, with other things dealing with Bolton Police. But I did respond to Mr. Keith, and I invited to, you know, discuss concerns further and let him know that anything that deals with police matters should be discussed with the police. I didn't hear anything else, but soon after, Mr. Keith reached out to the director of pupil services directly, which is an employee of the district. He asked for time to sit and discuss his concerns with the director of pupil services, but he was referred over to the superintendent at the time. Right around then, I believe Chipper's or Moscow contacted Mr. Keith and shared pertinent areas of policy and student handbook information at the high school, and offered to further discuss Mr. Keith's concern in line with student privacy, because that's a real big key. Mr. Keith then contacted the superintendent's administrative assistant, spoke with her, and later contacted the high school principal, who once again provided Mr. Keith with appropriate information. Superintendent emailed Mr. Keith, who once again invited discussion, but asked that he not be contacting employees of the district in official capacity. And an email was sent to the selectman chair of Bolton and the town administrator to make sure that they were aware of what was going on. Frankly, you know, I was after the SRO when I was at his goodbye party that the other kids were having at the high school. This is not a guy that was despised, disliked, or anything, there were hundreds of kids that were there. There were tears, there were hugs, there were high fives, faculty turned out. This is a guy who did not want to leave the school district. This is a guy who felt that he was a political football, and that he had to leave the school district. He took a pay cut, and he told me, that it was okay to actually say that tonight, he took a pay cut to leave the district, because he did not want to be involved in these politics that are, that are hitting this town right now with the police. And now it's coming out, it's filling out into the district. It's involving the school district itself, it's involving the other towns, because the SRO is a really key piece for all the kids in this school district. And I don't think that one specific town has the right to do all this without bringing you all into the circle.
If I can offer something real quick, if you're sure. My mother's an employee at the high school, I have a sister at high school, you know, I know a lot of them, so when you're saying it's dead on, that the, that SRO, I never meant was going to be sorely missed. I will offer your assessment here as to if he uses political football. I don't know the details, but I can tell you that his professionalism, to the end, was my question, and he did not acknowledge that to anybody, that he felt that he was a political football. And I commended for that, because it's a difficult position to put him in. So he was the utmost professional to the end.
So I had some people talking with me at this, this party, and as far as the law enforcement aspect of what he had to do, that was such a miniscule part of his job. The resource, and the resource officer is what's been used. This is, this is a guy who's out dealing with kids that are at risk on a daily basis, the kids that feel isolated, you know, you've got, we've had issues with the LG, LG, yeah, so he's, he's providing comfort and help with kids that, that are struggling with, with all kinds of issues. That's, and that's the service thing, and, and you could see that at that party, the way he was touched. But I'm going to also bring up something else, too. We had a student adverse survey that comes out every couple of years. We've had drugs in the high school, we've had kids that are using...
Oh, please.
No, 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 like everywhere else. My point is that we might be small towns, but we still have big city issues.
Oh, we have big cities.
And, and it's not anything that's, that's abnormal, but I invite anyone to look at the adverse surveys and understand that, that we have real concerns on that level. Unfortunately, our SRO has had to use his, his professional capacity as a law enforcement officer very seldom.
You know, I want to jump in for a second, because I think that Lancaster police chief is here, and I really appreciate that. And I think that one of the things that you're getting at is the necessity and the, how the SRO has become part of the fabric of that school, and how the SRO has become part of the community in the school, in the broader community, and how the students don't see the SRO as a police officer, they see him as a resource.
Well, he's like any, I mean, a food service professional, a teacher, a student, a student, and they all serve a purpose within the school, to create that community.
Exactly, and, and we, when we were all at, you know, many of us were at that, and there were kids, I mean, you could see the pictures, we have pictures, we have video, but I think it would be important for people to understand the function of the SRO, because I think people think it's a police officer, and they automatically go to that other extreme. So would you, do you mind?
Okay, 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 we'll do that. There's one more very brief thing about this.
Wait, wait a minute, wait, wait, would you mind, though, if we have the chief just say two words, because I don't want, but go on.
Okay, so there's, there's another layer to this, too, because, and this is part of the reason why I'm bringing this up tonight. Tomorrow on the agenda for the Bolton Selectman meeting, we're dealing with school policy, we're dealing with district policy, and I believe, I, I can't remember what it is, but it has to do with, it has to do with, what to do with, what to do with troubled kids and how we handle, how we handle them. And again, now we're crossing lines, we're going into a regional school district, and I'm not sure if there's a clear understanding what a regional school district is, and what a town is, and, and the, the authority that the two towns have, but it's really funky, because we're not sitting there in the school committee meetings discussing town policy in there, and that's, in essence, what's happening. And I think that the bigger picture is here, that the SRO position is in jeopardy. We have a Bolton police officer that's being used for that, and, and I believe that, that that position is, is being hunted down itself, because now we have a different SRO in that position, but the conversation is still continuing. So it's not been that individual, it's now the position.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So the SRO, the, the SROs that are at Neshova are town of Bolton employees. So if were there litigation, the town of Bolton would be drawn in, is there an indemnification agreement between the district and the town, where the district says, we are going to absorb all costs, all judgments, no matter what?
That discussion, that discussion we can have tomorrow night, when you have on your individual town agenda, our district policy, and we can talk about that then, but we're not prepared to talk about that.
Okay, so I have another, I have another follow-up to that. There's nothing stopping the school district from hiring their security forces, nothing.
Sure.
And the towns, no matter which town it was, wouldn't have anything to say about that.
So let me ask you a question, and, and I'm going to jump to Chief in a second, because I really think it's important for people to understand from a law enforcement's perspective, what an SRO does. Remind me what the question was, because I just...
What you thought, give me that, so I'm hiring a security force.
Say, oh, oh, because, you know, I think one of the things that's missing here is, and I'm going to stop in a second, is the consideration of the community. The police officer that is in our school as the SRO now is part of the Bolton community, okay? So we, this guy is, or woman now, is part of the community, the kids get to know her, they see her at various things, and we don't, the school district pays for 180 days of that officer, which means that the kids that live in these areas see that officer in the summers, when school's not in session, they're part, they're, they're, they're a familiar face. So I'm not really sure where you're going here, but...
Because I think one concern that I have is why is the town of Bolton absorbing the cost, the risks, all of that, or something that's a policy decision of the school district? Why, why should the town of Bolton absorb that? And I know the other two towns, I think, contribute to that, but they're not contributing to the OPEB, their retirement contributions, or something. So it's just, it seems awkward that you have this individual legal entity, which is the Neshova Regional School District. It's a separate sovereign entity from the town of Bolton, the town is still, why is that, why is the town of Bolton employees that are in there?
So if that's the agenda, then that's great, but that's not what's been brought forward. It's been all this other stuff and this...
This reaction.
Where about? But you know what, I want to answer this question. If we could, I'd like to table that discussion, we'll be bringing district council with us tomorrow night, and we can answer all of those questions. So can we table that, so that the appropriate individuals here...
You raised the issue about why is the board of selectmen of Bolton interested in this issue, one of the issues is liability, which Bolton bears...
But it's our policy that we discuss it, that's, yeah, but it's our, it's our policy.
So you raised that, so liability, we're bearing the responsibility of that solely.
And I'm just, I'm just curious.
I know, but we're, you know what, she, we're going to bring her tomorrow night, they can ask those questions, and it's inappropriate right now for front-town meeting for us to be doing this.
Table the whole thing.
I don't think so, because...
Well, it's, it's not, it's not inappropriate, it's just that, it's just that it's not part of the agenda.
Right.
Now, when, when this particular agenda item did come up, you and I had a conversation about it, and we both agreed that it was really not appropriate to have it at a selectmen's meeting in Bolton.
Right.
That the forum should be this meeting here.
Or a school committee.
Or a school committee meeting. And I forwarded an email to Don indicating that, and I asked him to forward that to the other two selectmen, in particular Mr. Keith, and suggested that Mr. Keith put an agenda item on this meeting, and he has declined that, and that's why we're having the meeting tomorrow. So we will have that discussion, but, but you're absolutely right. It is not appropriate for the town of Bolton to be having a discussion about policy, it should be a discussion amongst the three towns, the district and the school.
And on one issue, and it's not getting into liability, but if, if that's the rationale, you know, last tri-town that we're at, I pleaded with you about that culvert on Wilder Road. We've got almost 200 students a day that are traveling up and down twice a day across Wilder Road. That, according to the paper, is in risk of imminent catastrophic failure. And we voted for it as a town, we've allocated money for it, it didn't get done. We're allowing dump trucks by the dozens to cross that daily to dump, to dump debris over an old trail to fill up the lots, fat, thousands, thousands of pounds, right, going over that. And anyone take that into consideration? What about the liability if something does happen to the kids in the school? So to say that you're worried about liability with that, you know, I mean, it doesn't, it kind of flies in the face, because if you're not taking care of the roads that we've already voted for, and the kids are traveling over that, and there's no concern there, how can that, you know, it just, it doesn't jive.
I would be glad to discuss the culvert thing.
I would, and it's a bridge, let's not call it a culvert. It spans about a four-foot section across Wilder Road, it's raised, it's effectively a bridge, if that collapses...
What I'm hearing from Neil is that there seems to be inconsistency when it comes to student safety.
Absolutely. And then involves Lancaster schools that are crossing Wilder Road, too, and I apologize for interrupting you.
I think that's a separate item. I do want to address some of the issues you raised.
The culvert is...
Oh, but that actually just was going to...
So this is a big issue.
What's that?
Use of force at the high school is a big issue. So for me, I think it's really important that the school, high school administration has a very clear role about their responsibilities for discipline, and that the student resource officer, you know, it's very clear that they're there for public safety, and not as the strong arm for the administration.
That is inflammatory! No, I'm sorry, that is not, I'm sorry, I am sorry.
I'm not finished.
You know what, I'm going to tell you something.
I listened to your statement, and I'd like to finish.
We're not going to listen to you tell us that the police officer is, is the muscle in the high school. That's not fair.
An SRO should not be used by the administration as the muscle. So if, if, if there's a non...
But you're assuming that they are.
If there's a non-compliant student in the hallway without a pass, and the administrator is having problems, the administration needs to be able to deal with that situation. What happened in this case is that the student, the situation escalated, and the student was pepper sprayed.
Well, wait a minute, you were talking about students, that's privacy rights.
This is a child, stop, no more, you cannot talk about this. When I politely called you and said to you, Mr. Keith, we cannot speak about this incident, you said you understood, that's enough.
We can talk about incidents.
I've been told about that email, that was a violation of child privacy.
We can talk about incidents and not specific...
Come on, you're all here.
This is out of control, and this is, and this is why I brought this up.
So that's where transparency in the dialogue needs to go.
No, Mr. Keith, that's not fair. And you're impacting three towns, children in three towns.
That's, that's not what the town, that's not what the towns, that's not what the parents of these kids at the high school, you know what, the parents of the kids at the high school, they get rid of this, and I got to tell you, that is going to be a firestone for you guys to handle, okay? Because you're chasing the SRO and accusing the SRO of being the strong arm.
No, I'm worried about the administration's policies.
I'm sorry, I think we're finished.
We'll continue in this conversation.
Chief, would you like to stand in that place?
At this point, I, I don't think that it'd be an appropriate time for me to say anything. I think I'll reserve that.
Thank you.
All right, well, this discussion is going to be continued tomorrow, but, but from my perspective, the narrative that Neil Darcy outlined is accurate, because I was informed along the way by both the chair of the school committee and the superintendent of the district about what was going on. And from my, my viewpoint and standpoint, this is just another example... is just another example of working behind the back of Board of Selectment and the town administrator. You know, this whole notion that, that these two gentlemen are on transparency, nothing could be further from the truth. You two have been operating behind the scenes and behind the backs of everybody with this issue, with this issue, with the culvert issue, and every other issue.
Yeah, and that is untrue, and you're violating the rules of this body that we adopted 10 years ago.
I don't, I don't think there's an ethical issue about calling up, uh, the representatives of the school committee to talk about use of force. I don't think there's an ethical issue of me calling up the superintendent.
But you didn't call me. I called you. You've never reached out to me. You've never called, you've never asked to be, to meet with the school committee, and you've never asked to meet with the policy committee.
If I were, if I were calling, you know, the principal at the high school and saying, you know, "I want my child in an honors class or on varsity," that would be unethical. But calling up to talk about use of force and use of force policies is part of my job. It's part of researching, getting information for this meeting. And you can characterize it as going behind the backs of Don Lowe and other Board of Selectment members, but I feel like I'm doing my job.
You were, you know what? No one's saying that you're not doing your job, but I will be happy to make public, as long as the attorneys can take a look at it and redact anything that's sensitive, the emails that were going back and forth, because what you're talking about, and what you were talking about with the sped director, with, with me, with Neil, when I called you proactive, you've never called me, with the superintendent's office, is a particular individual student incident. And that, as I said to you, we can't talk about that. Once it goes to the police force, it's done. We're out, and we're not gonna talk about a kid.
Other schools do it differently, Lauren.
But if you wanted to talk about a policy, then why didn't you let me know that? You never said to me you wanted to talk about a policy.
Lauren, I'm gonna tell you, other schools handle use of force differently and much more, you know, proactively. So we can talk about it tomorrow night.
If you wanted to discuss a school committee policy, please contact me. I will either hook you up with the policy committee or the full school committee.
I talked to Neil.
But to do it in an open session, in a public forum, and to throw accusations is unfair to every student and every teacher that is in this district. That's unfair.
I tried to speak to a whole bunch of people, including, including the super...
About a particular student incident.
Include, no, about general use of force, and I was just giving, giving...
That's not what your emails said.
You, you know, there's...
I'm happy to make those public once our attorney reviews them.
If you're pepper spraying a student, it's a failure of use of force. I'm just gonna say that.
We are not pepper spraying children, and you're speaking about an incident, Jonathan.
I have spoken to other school districts, and they are very clear that this was a failure. And you need to look at it more critically as a failure. That's not the way you deal with students.
You know what? I, I, I think that this discussion is so far gone right now, and the comments that you're making about what went on in incident that I wasn't at, that you weren't at, you're not an officer, you're not an administrator.
Right, there should, there should be reports. Everybody involved should write a report.
Okay, so now you're gonna tell us what our policies are, Chase.
This is what other schools do.
Why don't you send me an email or call me, and we can have you sit with the policy committee, and you can share those thoughts, or put them in writing. But why would you bring these types of things up where there's no opportunity for us to have a civil discussion, but you're bringing it up in a public session so that everyone can hear whatever it is that your issue is and whatever, however you wanna tweak it? But it's not fair, Jonathan, because you haven't given the administration a chance to speak. You haven't given the school district a chance to sit down and talk with you, to understand what your issues are.
I think you're wanting to speak to you since June.
Because everything that is not true.
So it's true.
Because if you were trying to speak with me, you know I'm the one who reached out to you to find out what I could do to help you. You know I'm the one that sent you the email with the attached information. You never proactively reached out to me. So be honest about it. That's not what happened. I am happy, I would love to set up a meeting for you to come and talk to us, but to do it in this type of forum where it's not conducive to a discussion is unfair.
You said Superintendent Clancy wouldn't talk to me about use of force. You said the special ed director wouldn't talk to me about use of force.
I said that to you?
You did.
I said, "The superintendent will not speak to you about an individual student issue or incident unless it is your student." I told you that this sped director will not speak to you about an individual student issue unless it is your student. We can't do that, Jonathan. We're violating their privacy.
You know what? I've, I've talked to other schools, and it's just not the way you portray it. You can talk about these incidents. You can investigate them, and you can improve your policies.
Well, if you wanna have a policy discussion, I would invite that in an appropriate forum where you can sit down and understand what the issues are. But I'm not gonna come to a tri-town meeting and have you scream at the top of your lungs to the world, even if it's figuratively, that there are issues with the school that you're assuming, and it's wrong. It's not right. Why aren't we having a sit-down discussion? Why haven't you sent me anything about this? Nothing.
I, I've emailed Neil. I, I tried to...
Did you contact me?
Yeah.
No, I, I contacted you.
No, we had two conversations after I tried to talk to the school.
I told you if you had more, if you had more questions, to please reach out, and that didn't happen. That didn't happen.
Have you ever provided any of these people with the information that you supposedly have found in other school districts?
I'm ready to. And now we're...
Well, send it over!
Oh, so, so, so you're making accusations that everyone else is doing...
I'm not making accusations. There's an event that happened.
Forget about the event. Forget about the event. You've made accusations that what they're doing is wrong, and other school districts are doing it right. And you have all this information, just like all the people that are coming to you and saying, "I, everything wrong with this town," but we have not gotten one shred of any information, no data.
You snuck in this situation.
It's a, it's a trend.
We will, we will be happy to look at anything any of the selectmen from any of the three towns send us, any of you, but you must understand that because you decide that the school district is doing something wrong for three towns worth of kids, doesn't necessarily mean that it is so. Will you please send me the information? We will take a look at it. But this type of environment is inappropriate. I think we need to...
Yeah, I disagree.
I'm sorry.
Lauren, before you go, obviously, this is inflames community sentiment, right?
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to be more involved moving forward, I think. I'll give communities...
Please. I would, I would, I would welcome that involvement.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At school committee. At school committee.
Sure.
The policy of school committees that needs to be done at a school committee...
Well, I agree with you. Your, your school committee is elected to set policy in a district. It's not the board of selectmen to set policy in the school district. So I think the two of you are completely off-base. I think your argument is maybe the only one that holds any water, which is the OPEB liability and, and overall liability.
It's a town of Bolton employee.
I, that's why, that's why I told you that your argument is the only one that holds any water.
That is, it's outrageous. That report is outrageous that a student was pepper sprayed.
Oh, stop! Will you stop? You're an attorney. You're an attorney. So you know what? Let me ask you something, Tom Fray. If there was a particular incident with one child, my voice is elevated. You don't, you knew me better, you know.
Well, you should raise your voice.
If there's a particular incident with one child, it happened in one, one time in one year, do you think you're identifying the kid?
I have no idea.
So let's not do that.
Why?
That, that exactly is the law.
Not violating, nothing. This is a, this is a selectments meeting, a tri-town meeting.
No, actually, it's a tri-town meeting.
It's that, there is guaranteed, because I've seen it, there is a police report on that incident.
Anybody can request it.
And it is a public document. Of course it is. The poli, the police officers in that incident, because I requested it six months ago, and Don provided it to me, of, of the incident, and it is disturbing, and I don't know why a poli, I, I went to Neshoba 30 years ago, and I can tell you the crime, the drugs, the family dysfunction was far more, far worse then than it is today. It was a totally different community. And so...
On the former version of standing hook shooting, you're gonna say the school dynamic hasn't changed from 30 years ago?
Let me finish.
It's not that...
Let me finish.
That's kinda better.
The FBI says that crime is down by 75% from 1980. So why do we have police officers roaming the halls of Neshoba Regional High School? If there are kids that are disenfranchised, oppressed, they need supports, it isn't, you don't throw policing at it, especially town of Bolton policing, which comes back to what I said to Neil. But let's have the school district hire security forces. I'm sure most of them do. I just don't see, I'm a, I'm a town of Bolton selectman. We have a say over our employees. And, and, and at very least, there should be an indemnification of the town in the event something like this erupted and resulted in a lawsuit.
I'm gonna ask one question. Chief, you can choose to answer it or not.
Okay.
Schools are gun-free zones.
Yes.
If a district hired a private security company to enforce security, would they be bound by the gun-free laws?
It's probable that, that, that that would be an issue. But why would you wanna put security forces into a school? Security forces? Honestly, how is that, that's worse than a police officer. It's, it's...
You don't run an SRO now when you wanna bring in...
No, I, I, it's not the town of Bolton. It's the school district. They should do what they want. I think where the town of Bolton gets involved, it's our employee, our liability. Why, so, so the school district is well within its rights to, you know, decide their policy, but, but they, they shouldn't be deciding with town of Bolton employees.
Yeah, it's, it's your employee, and it's, it's my fault, it's, okay? So your decisions that you make on your board have far reaching...
They shouldn't though. They shouldn't.
Of course they do. When the kids are getting to the school.
They shouldn't. That's why we have a separate entity. It's called Neshoba Regional School District.
Certainly. That's being undercut by you trying to enforce some sort of...
I think we're talking by each other.
Okay.
I think we're talking by each other. I think, uh, since it's an agenda item for tomorrow, we will just continue it tomorrow.
Okay.
And feel free to, to come. Uh, I think it's inappropriate that we're discussing it.
It is absolutely inappropriate.
Yes, but it's, it was requested, so we'll have the discussion.
And, um, I appreciate that.
I, I just wanna say, I spoke to town council. He said the issues that I raised, and these are the, is two issues, two or three issues. He said those were appropriate for Bolton Board of Selectment to discuss. I just wanna be clear about that.
I think that that's fine, Jonathan. I think that in, um, like a collaborative spirit, I think that the school district, I think the school committee has, this committee has certainly prided itself on the fact that we work hard to make sure that our relationships with our town officials. Um, and it's not that it's difficult. It's not at all. It actually is kinda easy, except for what's going on here, and we don't understand it. So I think that my request would be, if there was a way for you to reach out to us and open a dialogue versus grandstanding in a public forum, it would, and especially because it impacts Lancaster Stowe as well, it would be so welcome. It would be so welcome. And I would work myself inside out to make sure that we could have enough people there to have a substantive conversation.
Lauren, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
At any point in time since this issue has come up and it's been going on for some time, have either Mr. Fray or Mr. Keat requested a, a meeting to discuss this at the school committee?
Not to my knowledge.
Why should I request a meeting with the school committee about a town of Bolton employee, Mr. Chair?
Because he's, because we're, I think there's two things. There's one thing is about the school committee policies. So that really shouldn't be discussed in your meeting, right? You can agree to that, can't you?
I can, no, I cannot. It's a town of Bolton employee.
But, but...
Technically, there should be no oversight whatsoever by the Neshoba Regional School District.
Tom, you're not listening. What Jonathan's talking about is our district policies. And that's what's on your agenda.
Using town of, your policy overs, apparently includes using town of Bolton resources, correct? That is true, correct?
Let me ask you, you know what? I'm not gonna get into a commitment here, but if the issue that we really have, maybe this is the precedent for all of us, is that you don't want a Bolton police officer to be the SRO.
I think it requires a broad expansive discussion, including what about the town's liability for actions taken within the four corners of the school district's jurisdiction.
You know what? I think that's a wonderful thing to discuss, and if you really wanted to work with us on it, if you really wanted to work with us on it, you would have reached out rather than grandstanding in a public meeting. And I would welcome that. So let's just get that on the books, Tom.
You're making people's good faith interests. You're, you're saying derogatory things about...
No, I'm not. I'm saying it doesn't make it so.
Good, good, good faith efforts, good faith interest, lots of thought, reading, research, you know, outreach, discussion, and well within, well within the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectment for the town of Bolton.
Except that this is a tri-town meeting.
I don't get it.
No. All right, I think we're good. Are we good?
Well, I think we're done for the moment.
Okay. I mean, we're good.
Let's move on. Um, the final agenda item is an update regarding the Mass, yeah, your town finance, high school work, county budget.
Can we come up? Please.
I think...
We're bored now. We're bored now. Do you want us to step outside?
Please, yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your opportunity to be here, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
All right. So I just...
Beer up.
Yeah.
Thank God.
So I just wanted to make the group aware that the Mass Association of Town Finance Committees, every year in the spring, usually in the May, um, month of May, they try to have some spring workshops about topics that would be of interest to town officials. It's not just for finance committee folks. It's for school committee, selectmen, and town officials. So they actually asked me to reach out to the tri-town area because they'd like to have a meeting with this part of the state. Every year, they try to have a conference of the state. So I just wanted to throw it out to find out different topics that folks would be interested in them addressing at this sort of a session. Usually what they do is they take one topic, um, and they bring in a speaker who can drill down, provide some expert advice. But we're early enough in the plan that we can get ideas from people now. So I guess I would just say if people have ideas now, let them know. Otherwise, you can email me.
Do you have any kind of past workshops, like some of the topics that were discussed, just to give us a, like, an idea of kinds of names or the specific tasks?
Yeah, so, um, for example, there's been efforts to, like, regionalize regional services, like regional dispatches, for example. So I believe that they had a session on logistics of how you craft a regional agreement for dispatch services. Um, and they did say that they would be interested in doing a topic focused on regional issues. So I think it would be great for the tri-town to think about things that would be of interest.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, uh...
Great, I see.
Brian, I'd be interested in audits.
We, we conduct audits. I mean, I know the school, the school district will audit now, but we need to, we do.
Been doing it a while.
And in fact, I'm, uh, planning on going out to revisit. We've had the same auditing firm for several years, and, uh, and I'm delighted with that. But after a while, I think you can, you don't need to consider it.
Right.
No, makes sense.
Well, you have been honest with me. You had all your same representatives.
Yeah.
I'm sure you're willing to...
Anything else of any pressing matter issue on the agenda, otherwise it's not been...
Well, we're gonna talk about the next meeting.
Ah, the next, absolutely.
And, uh, uh, it's gonna be hosted. It should be hosted by, so...
Yes, don't worry, Don. I'm gonna step in.
You're gonna feed us this time, man?
I will feed you, but, uh, you know, we're kind of laid back, so I just wouldn't want any kind of this yelling and arguing when you come to visit us and stuff. If I, if I wanted to hear that, I could stay home. I sure was mothered, so I don't have to hear people yelling and arguing. So, um, you're warm and welcome to come. And as I see, you got January 4th, January 11th. I'll make either date available for you. I'll even make the 18th, but, uh, you guys pick it.
We can't do the 4th, Dr. Fisher.
All right, then, the 11th is fine.
Why don't we just title the tri- for the 11th?
And you, uh, yeah.
Okay.
You will be fed. Maybe we'll have some... No, 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 thank you, thank you. I'm on Jenny Greer. Uh, we'll have to, uh, I'm not doing well with them. Well, I am, I am trying to do what I can.
Well, I am, I am trying to do what's...
She's not happy either, I know.
And we'll sit around the, yeah, who is this, Jenny? Anyway, we'll have a, uh, we'll have a agenda sitting around, you guys can add stuff to it.
Okay.
Hopefully, none of all of them stuff. Should I, should I show up tomorrow at the Board of Selectment meeting on this issue?
I, I...
I mean, this is the first time I heard about this.
Well, I think, welcome to come, please come.
Don could send you the police report if you're interested.
Uh, I don't have a redacted one, I won't forward one that's not redacted.
Okay.
I, you know, I brings back that number, so I don't want to see much. Let's just leave it, I'll come in and, uh, you know, and I think, yeah, probably you noted to have this conference going to be on Board of Selectment.
All right. Thank you, Brian, if there's no other issues, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I can make a motion to adjourn in a second.
All the favors you have, I say aye.
I...